To order, first thing for us is approval of the agenda. Board, we have had one request to amend the agenda by adding new business, which I guess would be new item, new section eight, a presentation from Ms. Victoria Hansen from the EDA concerning a grant that they have received.
Motion to approve is amended.
Thank you. There's a motion on the floor to approve the agenda as amended. All those in favor signify by saying aye. I vote aye. Thank you. If you would rise and Mr. Ayers is going to lead us into invocation followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Heavenly most gracious Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the rain that we've seen and the seasons that we're in. Father, be with the men and women of our military as they stand in harm's way each and every day on foreign lands as well as here at home to protect our liberties that we so enjoy. Be with our fire EMS and our law enforcement here in our community as they protect us and take care of us in times when we need them. Be with us as members of this board as we move forward with the county business. Be with us, guide us, and direct us. In your name we pray. Amen.
Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, the next section on our agenda is citizen comment. Is there anyone that would like to address the board? Hearing and seeing none, we'll move on to public hearings. Our first item is a special exception by Michelle Knight. Mr. Creasy, you want to give us an overview?
Chairman, Board, the first request is by Michelle Knight for a special exception in the A1 Ag District. The purpose of their request is to allow for the short-term tourist rental of a dwelling. The property is located at 239 Christian Springs Road and is further identified as tax map number eighty-one dash three dash five. Currently, there's a single-family dwelling located on the property. The surrounding area in general has the same characteristics as the requested parcel. The property is owned agricultural and all around is also zoned agricultural with single-family dwellings surrounding the reference parcel to the north, south, east, and west. Other than that, in the staff report are the requirements governed for short-term tourist rentals of section nine sixteen. In addition to that, are requirements of a special exception. I'm not going to go through the recommended conditions unless you all have questions about them. They're pretty straightforward and are the same ones that you have seen in the past. Are there any questions for staff?
Any question? Okay, thank you, Mr. Creasy. Is Ms. Knight present?
I'm Michelle Knight and I'm a single woman, so I use all the income for, to help out with the rest of it and gives me more time to spend with my nine grandkids. And I enjoy doing it. I get to meet a lot of different people, never had any trouble. I've had a lot of people come in for a lot of different things. They come into, they always go to the restaurants, they always ask where to go. They come in looking for housing to buy and to rent. I don't know, it's been very good for the neighborhood too. They've, you know, they do walks and everything. We've never had a complaint and I've had all my neighbors sign the paper that they're all good with it. And I just hope it can pass and I can keep making the income.
Thank you, Ms. Knight. Okay, there are two individuals signed up to speak. The first one is Megan Bowling.
Hello, I'm Megan. So Michelle is my mother. We just recently built a house three houses over, so we live on Christian Springs as well. So we've never noticed any issues, no noise complaints, traffic is about the same. I've gotten to meet quite a few of the people who come to stay. So I'm a manager for one of the units at Virginia Baptist and as you know, we've got a huge, a ton of traveler nurses, so we, it's good to bring them out here to Amherst so we can get that income put into our economy instead of Lynchburg because that's exactly where they're going to stay if we don't have a place for them. So, you know, besides Airbnb's and extended stays, there's not a lot of options. Yeah, so I think, you know, there's really no reason for us not to, you know, not to approve it and, yeah, she does use it for income, so it's a good way for her to be able to stay at home and still have a little bit of income. That's really it.
Thank you, Ms. Bowling.
Thank you.
All right, next is Mr. Robert, is it Smoot?
I'm Robert Smith. I live at two-two-one Christian Springs Road. While technically I am not in adjoining land over to Ms. Knight, the way a driveway runs, I am her closest neighbor, okay? She has involved me with this project since her concept. I've been up in it several times, you know, giving her some critiques and things that she might want to change, might want to do different. I wholeheartedly support it. I have no questions whatsoever about it. It's been no issues whatsoever. If she hasn't, if she never mentions in casual conversation that she has somebody coming in, I would never know it. I'm less than a hundred yards, maybe fifty yards at the most from her house and I would never know it. Y'all have any questions for me?
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, is there anyone else present that would like to speak in favor or opposition of petition? If not, the public hearing is closed. Board?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the special exception request with the planning commission's recommendations and conditions.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor by Mr. Ayers. Is there any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. And I vote aye. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Good luck.
Okay, next item on the agenda is a special exception by Zebulon and Alan Strickland?
That's correct, Chairman. Chairman, Board, just as your previous one, this is a request by Mr. and Ms. Strickland for a special exception in the A1 Agriculture Residential District. The purpose of their request is to allow for the short-term tourist rental of a dwelling. The property is located at one-thirty-two Para Road and is further identified as tax map number seventy-five dash A dash twenty. The parcel is roughly point seven-five acres large and currently a single-family dwelling is located on the property. Just as the previous special exception, the surrounding area in general has the same characteristics as the requested parcel. The property is surrounded by agriculturally zoned property with a single-family dwelling directly south and vacant agricultural land to the north, east, and west. Just as the previous special exception, the requirements of a short-term tourist rental and special exception requirements are located in the staff report. I'm not going to go over the conditions unless you have any questions.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. or Ms. Strickland, would you like to say anything?
So it's kind of been my wife and myself, our dream to have an Airbnb or short-term rental for a number of years and this is the kind of space that we look for when we take a trip, you know, somewhere out in the country, out in the mountains, really nice, quiet place to get away and just enjoy the nature and the surroundings, so, you know, if anyone has any questions, we're open to them, but that's just a few comments we have.
We do, we'll call you back. Thank you, sir. Okay, is there anyone present that would like to speak in favor of this petition? Is there anyone present that would like to speak in opposition to the petition? All right, hearing and seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Board?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the special exception with the planning commission's recommendations.
Motion on the floor by Mr. Ayers to approve. Board, is there any discussion? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye. I vote aye. Congratulations. All right, next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
I think Mr. Ayers beat you to it, Mr. Wade. You can get the next one. All right, motion on the floor by Mr. Ayers. All those in favor signify by saying aye. I vote aye. All right, next we have a special presentation by R.T. Taylor on the Gateway Sanitary Sewer Project. Mr. Taylor?
Thank you for having me this evening. What you're going to get is a hard copy of what I'm going to talk through this evening. While Jeremy is passing that out, I just want to be very clear for this evening. The reason we're here tonight is because you asked us at the December, early December meeting to come back and provide some updates and that's what we're here for. In no way are we asking for any kind of formal action to be taken this evening. This is just to give you a status update on where we stand on a few items. In particular, the bank RFP process for interim financing or for the potential interim financing related to the Gateway Sanitation Sewer Project as well as the raw water intake project. So we went up to the banks and we divided them up into two separate notes. The upshot is in early February, when we do come back with some more clear details, we'll provide a little bit more in the way of analysis. And if at that time, the authority board wants to proceed with either or both financings, they'll be asked to take formal action or consider formal action through, by resolution at the authority board level. Contemporaneous to that, the county board supervisors meeting that same evening, there would be a resolution for you all's consideration for a county support agreement. That's just sort of big picture, the next steps on the process. So again, no action this evening. What we're considering here is the potential for interim financing for the Gateway Sanitation Sewer Project as well as an interim financing for the raw water intake project to get both of those projects going at your pleasure. Again, you may hit pause on one or the other at this point. It doesn't mean we can't proceed with the other one, okay? I think for purposes of the raw water intake project, which that project is mandated and needs to be done by a certain time or certain permits expire, it may make sense to proceed with that even if, let's say for example, the Gateway Sanitation Sewer Project is postponed for whatever the reason. Again, want to review just briefly the strategic plan of finance, again, doing the interim note, and then wanted to give you some perspective that we'll share with you in the back in the appendix of some estimated current market debt service schedules broken out between Gateway and the raw water intake project so you can get a sense of what the current market debt service would be for each of those financings or projects. And then we did a sensitivity if the rates increased fifty basis points and a hundred basis points. And then lastly, what you'll see in here is a summary of the top proposers on the interim financing. There, there's three that we'll focus on in particular based on their rates and the prepayment provisions that they provided, which were very flexible. But again, you will not be asked to take formal action at tonight's meeting. We'll reserve that for the meetings on February seventh. So with that framework, I'd like to turn to page one. Again, we serve as financial advisor to both the county board and the authority board and we do our annual report each year for the authority board to give them several scenarios on how to fund ongoing operations and capital projects and what the certain level of rates would have to be on a regular basis to avoid sort of a sticker shock or sawtooth approach. We've levelized rate increases and we update those each year for you all as well as the authority board so that when you're going into your budget process and setting rates and having your public hearing, you all land on the appropriate scenario for setting those rates. As we've been doing in the modeling, the raw water intake project has been in there and been planned for, for quite some time. We do know that the estimates have gone up recently based on the current environment for construction. If you turn to page two, and this was up for much discussion at the last meeting, the other project being considered is the Gateway Sanitation Sewer Project, which is currently estimated in total to be about three and a half million dollars. But again, as it was pointed out last time, roughly a million dollars has been given to the authority so that the net amount that the county portion would be, would be two and a half million for that project. And again, the Amherst County Service Authority sort of owns the assets, maintains the assets, they would be the issuers of the debt and servicing the debt, but again, as we've discussed previously, the county board, as it relates to its support behind the Gateway Sanitation Sewer Project would be net amount two and a half million dollars at this point. So it's going to take a little while for these projects to evolve, but the reason behind doing the interim financing on the front end of the strategic plan of finance is to get both projects going. It gives us time to identify what the final costs are going to be, getting the projects underway so that we stay on time, especially as it relates to the raw water intake project. On the Gateway Sanitation Sewer Project, assuming we want the developer to get started sooner rather than later, so all that has to do with timing and getting things going. The interim financing provides the funding, so we're not dipping too hard into our reserves that might skew our reserve percentages for the upcoming June thirty audit because we don't want to draw those down and have a year-end fund balance that's too low. That's effectively what we're trying to avoid. So in the effort to get both projects started and allow time for these details to evolve, that's why we're doing the interim financing. If you turn to page three, this is how we broke out our requests for proposals from the banks. We're asked them to bid on both of them at the same time so we could get the same equivalent rates, same final maturity. Because the project's going to evolve over a two- to three-year period, we tried to build in as much cushion as we could without going too far, so we asked for up to three-year notes. The Gateway ban, bond anticipation note would be roughly two and a half million. The twenty-twenty-three ban would be for the raw water intake. And we've kept that at the magical number of ten million dollars in the aggregate. With Mark's help and with your bond attorneys at Sands Anderson, the concept there is if you issue ten million dollars or less in a calendar year, the banks can potentially be more aggressive on it, what's called the bank qualified designation. And you'll see in the summary here, we're going to get to in a minute, a couple of the banks provided both a bank qualified rate and a non-bank qualified rate. And you'll see that there's a, not a, I guess, the difference is where they are able to kind of sharpen their pencils a little bit harder because they get certain tax breaks, if you will, on a bank qualified basis. The top proposer, the way that bank is structured, they actually, it's the same for them. They don't get that same break, if you will. So again, you have the option to proceed with one or both of these projects. Again, we're not asking for formal action this evening. And the reason why we're here tonight, again, is because we were asked to present a status update and that's why we had the bids due last week so we could get here in time, have a little bit of time to coordinate with the banks and clarify a few things, but that's why you did not have a formal proposal or presentation in your packages. We want to make sure we showed up here this evening and talked you through it. If you look at page four, the deadline for the banks to propose was last Thursday, January twelfth, and we did get eight proposals. So that's a, what we would consider a good showing of, you know, banks interested in the county and authorities' credit, okay? Out of those eight proposals, we've got top, the top three we're going to be looking at are Webster, Truist, and First Citizens, and you'll see that in a minute, but they're just listed here alphabetically on this page. And then lastly, at the bottom, I just want to point out, we're going to get to it after the interim financing discussion, but I did put in here some current market estimates of what, after you get through construction, what is that long-term debt service going to look like, okay? Just so you have a good feel for it. And again, ran a couple sensitivities if rates went up fifty basis points or a hundred basis points. Okay, page five, I'm going to just breeze over this page because I don't want to go through all eight banks. It's, you know, too much detail. What I will say is that you got these eight respondents. The rates range from three-point-seven-six percent on upwards of five-point-oh-four percent. And then there was another bank that provided something that would be a variable rate base, which there's no point if you can get a fixed rate lower, right? So let's just flip to page six. Again, Webster Bank is the low bid at three-point-seven-six percent. They are indifferent to the bank qualification designation. It can be documented either way. They allow for prepayment in whole or in part, so if you got both notes done, they would be done separately, but if you got both of them done, you could prepay either note. If you've got grant monies and you wanted to pay off the, toward the Gateway Sanitation Sewer Project. If you wanted to pay off a million dollars of that early, you'd be able to do so after the first year. Their stipulation is we want to at least lock in that first year's interest, okay? But after that, you have complete flexibility to pay it off in whole or in part, no penalty. Similarly, Truist and First Citizens, they provided slightly higher rates at four-point-oh-two percent on that BQ designation. They came in tight on that one. Truist will allow you to prepay it in whole only, so if you wanted to prepay the Gateway note, you'd have to pay off, you know, all, whatever you have outstanding at that time. You couldn't just do a partial of one million dollars and have one-point-five outstanding. You'd have to pay off the whole two and a half. Similarly, if you wanted to prepay the raw water intake note for some reason early, you'd have to pay it off in whole, which is not a big deal. Typically, you're getting those monies in and the purpose behind the prepayment is to pay off the note anyway. That's the function of the interim notice, we want to get those monies in and pay it off so we can do the long-term financing. And then on the First Citizens, they had offered complete flexibility. You prepay it at any time in whole or in part with no penalty. So what we wanted to show you is what that flexibility between the three proposers would cost you. Underlines eight, nine, and ten, that's where we've shown what the annual interest would be per each proposal. So for example, I'm just going to walk under column B, Webster Bank, at three-point-seven-six percent. As it relates to the two and a half million dollar ban, the annual interest would be ninety-four thousand. For the raw water intake ban at seven and a half million, that would be two-hundred-and-eighty-two thousand a year. And if you step across the other columns, Truist would be roughly sixty-five-hundred dollars higher for the Gateway ban, so that's the one-hundred-thousand-five-hundred. And because First Citizens' rate is the same, they're, they are the same, only sixty-five-hundred dollars difference from the low bid. And then as you step up to the non-bank qualified options, it gets a little bit higher with Truist being roughly seventy-seven-hundred dollars higher than Webster and thirteen-thousand dollars higher for First Citizens on the Gateway project, okay? So I think what this summary here shows is that, related to the Gateway note, your interest only is going to be roughly a hundred thousand dollars for years one, two, or three, whenever you pay it off. You basically going to have a hundred thousand dollars of annual interest to pay on the interim note. And what I'd like to do is if you put your finger right on that page, we're on page six right now, okay? I'd like to flip to page fifteen in the back. This page hasn't changed since early December and the upshot of this is what I want you to look at is line twenty-two at the very bottom of the matrix. And based on the developers' projections and looking at just what hits the county's tax rolls on the real property that is there currently, the land, plus what's supposed to be developed, right? And if everything goes according to plan, in fiscal year twenty-four, the county will get new monies to the general fund of roughly seventy-two thousand dollars. In twenty-five, a hundred and forty-six thousand. In twenty-six, two-hundred-and-forty-two thousand. Okay, so right there, the first two or three years, you're, you're almost, you are covering one-hundred-thousand dollars per year on the interim note, okay? So going back to page ten, again, please, if you wouldn't mind, just keep your fingers on page fifteen. This is a snapshot of what the long-term debt service would look like, and I'm going to focus on the Gateway Sanitation Sewer portion. In the middle of the page, that's in the brown and the gold, your project fund is eleven. On line eleven, it's two and a half million dollars. that's where we've shown what the annual interest would be per each proposal. So for example, I'm just going to walk under column B, Webster Bank, at 3.76%. As it relates to the two and a half million dollar ban, the annual interest would be $94,000. For the raw water intake ban at seven and a half million, that would be $282,000 a year. And if you step across the other columns, Truist would be roughly $6,500 higher for the Gateway ban, so that's the $100,500. And because First Citizens' rate is the same, they are the same, only $6,500 difference from the low bid. And then as you step up to the non-bank-qualified options, it gets a little bit higher with Truist being roughly $7,700 higher than Webster and $13,000 higher for First Citizens on the Gateway project, okay? So I think what this summary here shows is that, related to the Gateway note, your interest only is going to be roughly $100,000 for years one, two, or three, whenever you pay it off. You basically going to have $100,000 of annual interest to pay on the interim note. And what I'd like to do is if you put your finger right on that page, we're on page six right now, okay? I'd like to flip to page 15 in the back. This page hasn't changed since early December, and the upshot of this is what I want you to look at is line 22 at the very bottom of the matrix. And based on the developers' projections and looking at just what hits the county's tax rolls on the real property that is there currently, the land, plus what's supposed to be developed, right? And if everything goes according to plan, in fiscal year '24, the county will get new monies to the general fund of roughly $72,000. In '25, $146,000. In '26, $242,000. Okay, so right there, the first two or three years, you're almost, you are covering $100,000 per year on the interim note, okay? So going back to page 10, again, please, if you wouldn't mind, just keep your fingers on page 15. This is a snapshot of what the long-term debt service would look like, and I'm going to focus on the Gateway Sanitation Sewer portion. In the middle of the page, that's in the brown and the gold, your project fund is 11. On line 11, it's two and a half million dollars. Current market for 20-year financing would be roughly 3.78. So that's literally right at where your interim financing is, because the yield curve is still upside down. It's inverted. So short-term rates are higher than what the long-term rates are. Your first year interest only on the long-term financing, based on how we would issue the debt in the full-time frame of the first year, it'd be roughly $60,000. And your annual debt service on the Gateway Sanitation Sewer with principal and interest would be roughly $177,000. So if you, again, flip back to page 15, where we were looking at what goes to the general fund from the project, that long-term debt service ought to kick in around fiscal year '26, or at least partially, but it's probably all full PNI by '27. And with the development projected to bring on roughly $242,000 in '26, $340,000 in '27 to the general fund, that would more than cover the $177,000 in long-term debt service. And even after you ramp it up for the sensitivities at 50 basis points and 100 basis points back on page 10, you're, at 100 basis points, the long-term principal and interest for the sanitation sewer project would be just shy of $200,000. So what does all that mean? It means upshot, there are revenues being generated to the general fund if the development follows the projections and just the straight regular tax rate on your real estate stays the same and provides the same dollars as it is now on other properties throughout the county. This is incremental dollars to the general fund based on real estate tax revenues for the development at Gateway. Does that make sense? Okay. Just hit and reset on the interim financing. The Webster, the Truist, and the First Citizens proposals, they are all three holding their rates firm through early March. Webster, their rate expires March 3rd. Truist expires March 9th, and I think First Citizens expires March 12th. Our plan, again, is to come back to y'all in early February, ask for formal approval to move forward with one or both of the interim financing notes. At that point in time, assuming that you give your approval and the authority board gives their approval, we would move forward and try to get these things closed ahead of those expiration dates. If for some reason you decide to move forward with just one project, we can do that, get that closed by the early March timeframe. The other project would be in limbo for a bit, but we would be comfortable that the banks that have proposed aren't going away. They proposed, they might have to refresh their rates at some point if we delay, you know, beyond the early March timeframe. But that, that's basically what we're looking at as far as next steps goes. Any questions?
No, I appreciate those.
Yes, sir.
Level of detail we need, so thank you.
Thank you.
Well, you know, I always have a few.
Let me have it.
Well, who's actually securing the debt? Service Authority or the county?
The Service Authority. The only thing the county board would be asked to do at the February 7th meeting would be to provide its county support agreement, which you've done on all the authority debt up till this point.
I get that, but your projections on paying it off is based on our tax rate. So they're doing, they're getting the, they're issuing the debt, but we're essentially paying for the debt from our tax.
That was just for order of magnitude, to show you don't have to use those dollars. That was asked at the last meeting, you know, to show what the potential all-in debt service would be on an annual basis, so we'd know what the county side would potentially be on the hook for going forward. And that's why we provided the estimate for the long-term debt service and wanted to highlight the estimated general fund revenues that are incrementally generated by the district. And that's not the special district that's the regular.
I get it, so forgive me. So let's say you and I go buy a car. You co-sign for me to buy a car, right?
Yes, sir.
Which is essentially what we're doing, right? And I don't make the payment. You don't have to make it, right?
That, yes, sir.
So if the Service Authority goes out and issues all this debt, is the Service Authority going to have the means to repay it? Or are they looking for the county to repay it? That's my question.
And that is part of what needs to be discussed, is there's a combination of factors. Number one, in the past...
Y'all understand what I'm asking.
I did.
Mr. Martin, I thought we, yeah, I thought we had discussed this a little bit at the previous meeting, that the two and a half million dollars was going to be funded by the county.
Okay. I can get that, I can get there on the Gateway project, because that's economic development, but the raw water...
The raw water is the Service Authority, and I think...
So y'all would be paying. I get it. Okay, thank you very much. So my, my next question, just something to think about. So your numbers were based on the two and a half million, right?
Well, those, those... The other numbers are there, too. I focused on that, because this is for the county board consumption.
Page 15, right?
Yes, page 15, page 10 is the one that has the long-term debt service in the aggregate as well as the two individual projects broken out. So the water is down in blue, the sanitation sewer district is in the brown and gold. Big picture, all-in debt services in the aggregate at the top.
So if we move forward and we build the water line, or sewer line, I'm sorry, and the development does not move forward, we're stuck?
If, like we talked about last time, if the developers that currently own the land decide that they don't want to develop it anymore for whatever reason, they could sit on the land and not do anything with it, and then, yes, you are stuck. They could look to sell it. I don't know how you make somebody sell something, but unless it's developed, you would not be generating those additional incremental revenues to the general fund. I think is the question you're asking, right?
That is correct.
Yes, sir.
Well, I guess that's the only thing I'm pointing out. I think I've pointed it out before. If we move forward, which I really want this project to succeed, I really do, but if the project does not happen, we've put in a sewer line that we're going to be paying for, for how long?
Well, in here, we've said 20 years.
20 years with no return. So if we're willing to take that risk, that's fine, but I think that's something we need to think about between now and February.
Yes, sir, February 7th. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I go back to what I have been saying all along. We have needed to invest in that end of the county in infrastructure for decades. And if we don't do it now, we could be 20 years from now. I won't be having a conversation, but somebody will. And I think if not now, then when?
Okay.
We've got good people at the table, and I'm all for going forward.
Anyone else?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Taylor. We appreciate it.
Thank you all.
All right. Next thing on the agenda is a presentation by Ms. Victoria Hansen, the Economic Development Authority.
Evening. I come with good news, I'm happy to say. I'm going to talk to you about our Virginia Business Readiness Sites Program grant. It is for the Dillard site. So what is the VBRSP? It is a competitive state grant that's administered by the Virginia Economic Development Partnership, the EDP, and it's to increase business attraction and expansion in Virginia through site development. Speed to market is everything nowadays. If a large project wants to come to Virginia, they need to have a site that's ready to go. That means it is as close to pad-ready as possible. It is permitted. It has all the utilities. It is what we call project-ready. And so what's happened is, Virginia has not put in the money that many of our competitor states, North Carolina, South Carolina, Georgia, they've been pouring hundreds of millions of dollars every year to develop their sites. VEDP has a tier system, or all land. Then you go up through the tier systems to tier five, which means it is pad-ready to go. But you have to have this pipeline that's continually pushing out large project-ready sites. Several projects, and it's in the billions of dollars, of companies that wanted to come to Virginia, looked for a site, could not find a project-ready site that met their criteria, and then those projects moved south. So Virginia's lost a lot of these. So Governor Youngkin went to the General Assembly and put in about $350 million into this project. Then we all applied, the different, all over the localities around Virginia, applied for whatever site they thought met their criteria, went through several rounds, and Dillard site was picked as one of them that should be fully funded to tier four. So I'll explain a little bit more about that. So these grants are to help us pay the high development costs that are required to move these up through the tier systems. So the Dillard site was awarded $322,000. We've got a match that's no impact to the Board of Supervisors budget. The EDA is going to pull it out of their budget to move the Dillard site from tier two to tier four, which basically means a company could purchase site and be ready for operations in 18 months. So that is doing all the due diligence and then also permitting, so that someone could just pull those permits and actually start grading the site and building it. So it's a major win, because these two Dillard lots, so Dillard is 554 acres. The two largest and most developable lots are 105 acres and 55 acres. And with that, they could be a 1,240,000-square-foot building on one of them and 420,000-square-foot building on the other one. And if you build out a project that size, you're talking about a $2 billion investment. And that could mean also 1,500 to 2,000 new jobs. It is a major attraction for bringing a business here. And a business isn't going to come if you haven't taken out all that risk that lies in a, in that big piece of land, that's making sure there's not rock in the land, that you can get your utilities brought in, and I'll explain a little bit more about that later. But that could deliver an extremely high rate of investment and return it for us. So where is the Dillard site? You can see all 554 acres there, and then I will talk a little bit more specifically. Here you can see, the EDA knew in 2019, this was an unusual site for Amherst County. It is mostly zoned industrial. What's really special about this site is you've got utilities. You've got high-power transmission lines from AEP that cuts across the property, and you have Columbia gas, and you don't have many gas served. We don't have any 100-acre sites in Amherst County that are ready to go. You've got water and sewer here as well. And if you see, the Norfolk Southern Main Line goes adjacent to it and actually has an inactive rail spur that wraps around the site. So again, you've got all your key utilities right there on site, and having those large transmission lines means that you could actually make it heavy industrial, which means more investment. And AEP has recognized the value of the site, and they've put $30,000 towards some of the due diligence. So this is kind of the premier lot. It's 105 acres, 60 of which is actually developable. This is what we're calling Lot D. It is directly underneath the rail spur. Above it is the Old Virginia Brick Factory, and then you've got waters and other issues here, but the transmission lines go to the south. But you've also got three-phase power coming into Old Virginia Brick, and, you know, you've got utilities, water, and sewer is actually on site here as well. So when you look at that site and you go down here, this is just a concept drawing, but this is where you can see the 1,240,000-square-foot building that could go on that site. So this shows you just some of the topography and what's there. You've got a lot of pasture lands that's been used for hunting, so we would call this a greenfield site. Now, back in 2019, the EDA spent some of our dollars to do some preliminary due diligence, US Waters of the delineation, phase one endangered species, but we did not have the money to go ahead and keep further developing the site. This is the other smaller lot. It's actually a cross from Dillard Road. Here you can see Chaboya Hopman, H.D. Hackney. So this is an industrial area of Madison Heights. And so Dillard Road comes up along the top here. Again, transmission lines cut through, and here you can get 55 acres, 20 developable, and you can get a 240,000-square-foot building. And again, it's got gas here as well. No rail access on this one. So this video is just a drone video that kind of gives you, if you look where the yellow dot is moving, that just shows you where the drone is moving through Lot D, and then it moves on to Lot B. So the scope for this project is a preliminary geotech survey, a one-foot topography survey, because we know there's a lot of topography out there. We are going to need to rezone Lot B from R1 residential to industrial, so we'll be coming back to you on that. But as you can tell, that's bordered on several sides by industrial as well. An ALTA survey, a traffic impact study, a preliminary engineering report, and then with all that information, we can get mass grading permitted and then do infrastructure and construction documents permitting. That's your power, your roads, water, sewer, gas, and getting a rail spur crossing. We've got to get across that rail So the business case is clear. Those two Dillard lots could land a manufacturing project, but buildings that are very large and could mean over $2 billion in new capital investment and 1,500 to 2,000 new jobs. This is the Lynchburg Region's only 100-plus-acre greenfield industrial site that is both gas and rail-served. And we're only one mile from the four-lane interchange, 130 and 29, and then you go two more miles and you're on the four-lane bypass, which is interstate quality. In the past six years, the region's missed 65 opportunities, and again, that's for the whole region, primarily manufacturing. There was a loss of 12,000 jobs, 5.5 billion capital investment, because we did not have 100-plus-acre sites available. So they wanted to come here, but we did not have sites ready for them. The Dillard site had six different projects that looked at it, but without having all these other due diligence done, and so it was considered project-ready. They passed on it and went somewhere else. So that's what this site's, the grant's going to do. We're going to really investigate and unlock the potential of this site. We're excited to have this asset-rich site here in Madison Heights and look forward to finishing all the due diligence in about 18 months, and then we will be a tier-four project-ready in 18 months from there. So any questions?
I don't have any questions, but I'm all for this. I'll say that. You know, we've taken steps to increase the number of rooftops we have for folks. Now, I think we need to take the right steps to bring in the jobs.
Yeah. And I think those rooftops will help with the workforce. As they look at, you know, something that needs 1,500 to 2,000 new jobs, we'll want to see that the workforce is there and readily available as well. So I think that all is coming together at the same time.
Thank you, Ms. Hansen.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
All right. Moving on, county administrators' report.
Yes, the only item on here, and I do have one more thing I want to update you on, the only item is this economic development, EDA vacancies. We've advertised the terms of Michael Russell and Dan Sweeney expire tomorrow, January the 18th. Mr. Sweeney desires a reappointment. Mr. Russell has sent a letter informing that he does not wish to seek a reappointment. We did advertise this in the New Era Progress and News in Advance on December the 15th. We did not receive any additional letters. We did receive a letter from Mr. Sweeney. The closing date was December the 31st, so we have three options for you in your motion to recommend either appointing Mr. Sweeney to serve another term, or number two, direct staff to schedule an interview on February the 7th with Mr. Sweeney before making a selection, or direct staff to re-advertise the vacancy to identify additional interested persons. or direct staff to readvertise the vacancy to identify additional interested persons.
I'll make a, does he want to speak? Does Mr. Sweeney want to speak?
Oh, Mr. Sweeney, are you here? Oh, no. All right.
I'll make a motion to reelect him back to the position.
All right, there's a motion on the floor, is there any discussion? All right, if not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
One more thing I'd like to update you on. Today we received what's called preliminary information from the Virginia Department of Transportation Smart Scale. VDOT allows localities to put in up to four projects. We just received their staff-recommended scenarios, so it's a bit early now. But in the Lynchburg Region, we were selected preliminarily for three projects. The only other locality that had that many was Danville, and it looks like Lynchburg received one project, Campbell zero, Bedford zero, Appomattox zero. We did really, really well in scoring and getting funding. It's approximately ten to eleven million dollars of transportation funding that would be coming to Amherst County. Again, this is preliminary, but this is the staff-recommended scenarios from VDOT.
Is it project-specific? Is twenty-nine one fifty-one one of them?
Well, that that's already in queue. That's that's in queue now. So the new projects are Seminole Drive, right turn lane, Lynchburg Expressway, South Amherst Highway intersection, that's adding a turn lane near McDonald's, and and then some access management. And then the final one is a Dillard Road, Lakeview Drive Access Management Project on twenty-nine. So just wanted to report that, that just came in today.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
We're on that subject, VDOT. Where are we on twenty-nine one fifty-one? Is all the funding there or just?
Yeah, that's my understanding, but why don't I follow back up with VDOT and see where they're at, and I'll let the rest, I'll report back to the board.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Bryant? All right, Mr. Popovich, county attorneys' report.
I don't have anything at this time, sir.
Thank you, sir. Moving on to liaison and committee reports. Blue Ridge Regional Jail Board of Directors Meeting. Is that you, Mr. Bryant?
Yeah, I mentioned I mentioned a little bit of this in our previous budget workshop. The department, the Blue Ridge Regional Jail has lost a fair amount of their inmate population. The Department of Justice has moved some of those inmates out. The reduction of numbers makes significant impacts to their budget. I'll have more to report with you to you in the next month or so. There'll be a financial meeting that the Board of Directors will will gain a better understanding of their budget. Again, brought this up to you at the five o'clock meeting in terms of what that could look like from a budgetary standpoint. They are requesting more from the county.
Questions on that? All right, moving on, Ms. Tucker, Agricultural Committee.
We've got a meeting, has it been scheduled for next month? Chairman, I know you were working on that.
I don't.
For the Ag Center.
Yes, so correct, right, December twenty-first, correct. We'll have a joint meeting with the Nelson County Board of Supervisors.
That's all I've got.
February.
February, okay. It's almost Christmas. Emergency Services Council, Mr. Ayers.
Yes, sir, we had a meeting on Wednesday night, and they elected their officers. Director Bean was there, and he kind of gives good direction to the meeting. And there were several discussions about all the EMS and fire agencies in the county and basically all the business right now. Brad, do you know of anything maybe needs to be brought to the board? I don't recall anything of significant interest, but everything seems to be going well with men and women of our public safety.
Thank you. So we are back to citizen comment. Is there anyone here that would like to address the board? All right, hearing and seeing none, we'll move on to matters from members of the board. Ms. Tucker?
I don't have anything, thank you.
Mr. Ayers?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Pugh?
I have nothing.
Wait, and I have nothing. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Stand adjourned.